Open Meetings Act posted right here in the council chambers. And to start, please join with me in rising for a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance. And I think today, a moment of silence lets please call attention to the passing of, recent passing of Jay Paul McIntosh, whose funeral was held earlier today. Jay Paul was a very kind and generous man, and his legacy will benefit Norfolkans for generations to come. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call then.
Granquist.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Claussen.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Faust.
Here.
Viall.
Here.
Okay, with that, I will look for approval of the content agenda.
So move.
Second.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay, and also approval of tonight's full agenda.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay, we begin tonight with special presentations, proclamation for February 28th, 2017 as Spay Day USA. Whereas cats and dogs provide companionship and share the homes of hundreds of individuals in Norfolk, and whereas the problem of pet overpopulation is a reason for the cost of animal control and animal pound expense for Norfolk taxpayers, and whereas animal pounds and shelters throughout the country must euthanize approximately four million cats and dogs each year, although many of them are healthy and adoptable due to the lack of critical resources such as money, space, and good adoptive homes, and whereas spaying and neutering cats and dogs, among other animal companions, has been shown to drastically reduce pet overpopulation, and whereas veterinarians, national and local animal welfare organizations, and private citizens have joined together again this year to advocate and support the spaying and neutering of companion animals on Spay Day USA 2017, now therefore be it resolved that I, Josh Moenig, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, by the power vested may do hereby proclaim February 28th, 2017 as Spay Day USA in the City of Norfolk and the surrounding area, and urge citizens to observe this day by having their own cats or dogs spayed or neutered, or by sponsoring the spaying or neutering of another person's cat or dog on a homeless, or a homeless cat or dog. Is there anyone here to receive the proclamation tonight? Doesn't look like it.
I thought she would be.
Okay. We'll move to item number 24 on the agenda, opening a public hearing to discuss the 2017 to 2022 one and six-year street improvement plan. And we'll hear from Dennis on this.
Good evening. The one and six-year plan that we're discussing this evening is for the fiscal year that starts in October of 2017, going out for six years. So, stuff that will occur in 2017, this construction season, has already been through this process and is moving forward. So, one big project we do have, two big projects we have on the board for this year is, number one, the bridge on Norfolk Avenue. We started the water main work on that, expect bridge closure sometime in March and construction thereafter. Would request everybody to continue to patronize and shop the folks that will be on the east side of the bridge as that project moves forward. Other project that we've got coming this summer will be armor coating of several streets throughout the community that are asphalt streets. That project will be moving forward here this summer. Which drives us to the number one project on the list here for next year is $2.8 million, the miscellaneous street work. That will be concrete milling in light Norfolk Avenue from Ninth Street to Fourteenth Street, First Street from south Victory Road north of Benjamin and Monroe east of First Street. There may be another project or two that I've missed in there, but that's going in, replacing the broken concrete and then milling out two inches and putting asphalt back in. These streets have an alisolica reactivity occurring on the surfaces, and we're trying to arrest that. The next probably other project in the one-year plan is to finish up the bridge. There'll be a little carryover probably in funding anyhow after the first of October. And then project number 12 is looking at doing some maintenance on other bridges, and basically this is deck restoration or deck protection type things, primarily talking about the bridges that are girder bridges as opposed to the box culverts. So, across flood control on Norfolk Avenue, across flood control at Benjamin, and across the flood control on First Street, also the Norfolk of the Elkhorn River at Elm. We had Olson and Associates do a review of those bridges and come up with some recommendations. The total of their recommendations is $500,000. That'll extend the lives out from a minimum of about 10 years to some of them maybe even a 50-year fix for them. So, those are the big projects. One thing that has occurred is Benjamin Avenue has moved a little bit further out in the one and six-year plan here due to the bridge on Norfolk Avenue being more expensive than we had originally anticipated. So, with that, I would answer any questions the elected officials might have, and then give the public an opportunity to comment as well.
Any questions for Dennis? Dennis, can you talk a little bit about the process staff uses to prioritize street projects?
Primarily the engineering staff, some street staff, look at the various projects that have been identified in the community that need to be reviewed and looked at, and then we try to look at those as to which projects need to be done to save the infrastructure that we have. And then we try to put it in there so that this plan is fiscally constrained. So, in other words, we should have potentially the money to do these projects as we move forward. You know, we live in Nebraska, and the winters in the climate will cause us to have to reevaluate those things probably on an annual basis. So, that's how come some of these projects get in here and then get delayed as we move forward. So, you know, one of the projects that's impacted Benjamin Avenue over the years has been the bridge on Norfolk Avenue, and that's a case where a couple of years ago, we had a hole in the deck, which drew our attention, that something's gonna have to happen here sooner than later. So, going forward, we're hoping to get an earlier start, or maybe we can have some community input to that process earlier in the process, in the October, early October, November timeframe a year from now.
I think that's a good idea for the process itself, to open a component of public input as to asking citizens to come in and give us their opinions on what streets should be prioritized. So, I like that idea. Any other questions for Dennis? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so if there are any comments from anyone in the audience or public, this is the time to make them.
Thank you for this opportunity, Mayor.
Evening, sir.
My name is Mark Clafter, and I have an article here that appeared in the January 4th edition of the Norfolk Daily News that was posted in the newspaper, so I thought I would just read this to you. It's very short and concise, and it expresses my view and my opinion of a certain situation in our town, something that I really care about, and various other people care about concerning an unpaved street in our community. I have lived in Norfolk for 18 years, and I'd like to add, I've been living here and working as a respiratory therapist at the hospital here in Norfolk. I grew up in New York City, and I've lived in Charlotte, Durham, and Chapel Hill, North Carolina, and briefly in Philadelphia and Boston. I never lived in a town with unpaved city streets until I moved to Norfolk. There is an unpaved street one block to my north on 15th Street between Hayes and Park Avenues. I live in the 500 block of 15th, this is referring to the 400 block of 15th. There are several other unpaved streets in our city too, and I'm not addressing that at this moment. I've been told that a quote paving district and quote has to be created by a 51% vote of the property owners on that street for it to be paved. The day for such power to be in the hands of the property owners should be passed, in the past, is what I mean. Norfolk wants to be known as a progressive, growing, and attractive city for folks to live. Let's go all in on this. Cities have paved streets for various reasons, such as dirt in the environment, snow removal, ADA, American for Disabilities Act compliance, and overall safety for people to walk, be able to drive. Unpaved roads are plentiful and fine in the alleys in our town and in the countryside outside of town. Main arteries and streets in a city should be paved, and 15th Street is a main connecting street between Norfolk Avenue to the north, Pazwalk to the south. I appeal to the Mayor and City Council of Norfolk to be consistent and wise in their overall plan to modernize our city and pave these streets by whatever means this can be accomplished for the benefit of all of our citizens. That's my article, and I really do appreciate the modernization that has occurred in this city in the 18 years I have lived here. The modernization of downtown, the resurfacing of certain streets, fixing them for people with disabilities, but I have lived with this street one block to my north, and it is not safe. And it is not safe for walking, it is not safe for two vehicles to drive on, it is a mess to maintain right now, even today. I took pictures on my walk out there, and there's mud and ruts of dirt, and it is simply, should not be tolerated, in my view, anymore. And, again, I know that in the past, it's been the power of the people who live there to vote yes or no on this, but I can't see that anymore as being something that should hold sway. When I hear that you folks have $2.8 million that you're talking about for miscellaneous repairs on streets that already exist, I feel that some of that money could probably help some of these people to get that paved. I know they would be assessed, the property owners, there would be some kind of assessment, but if there could be help for them, that might make this doable. I realize some people there might be on low incomes, you know, but, and I'm not trying to hurt anyone through this, but just trying to help the overall community. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions, Mark?
Mark, I drove by there just the other day, and I know you and I have had conversations about this before, I appreciate you bringing it back up, and I think we do need to take a strong look at this, and not only that one, but...
What did you think when you drove by there?
My fillings were rattling in my teeth.
What?
My fillings were rattling in my teeth, so.
Yeah.
Pretty rough.
If every one of you drove down there right now, you would be stunned that this is a street in our city.
Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mark, for those comments. I appreciate them, and hear actually pretty frequently in the last few weeks about other streets in town that remain unpaved, and it's hard for me to argue with you about any of that, in this day and age, that for whatever reason, we still have unpaved roads that are at times heavily trafficked in our town. So, there is, however, somewhat complicated history in this, and maybe Shane or Dennis would like to, would you guys like to comment, address some of the challenges we've had in the past in getting this situation corrected?
You know, we've had several different meetings with property owners down there to... Yes, I believe it is.
Over the, numerous times over the years, we've had meetings with the property owners down there to discuss the potential of paving districts in that area. We haven't been able to get a consensus of the folks to go for the paving district there. We've talked about that there is a statutory authority that three-quarters of the council deem it wise and advisable that this street should be paved, that it can be done without the 51% support from the neighbors, so that's kind of that in a nutshell.
So, there is an option for the council to go ahead with a three-quarters vote approval without 51% consent of property owners?
That's correct. It's statutory, and it has been used in the community rather sparingly over the years, but we've done it a couple of different times.
Okay.
Well, I guess, you know, we've got this plan before us right now, and it takes us out for a year, and then, again, as we noted, in November or October of this coming year, we want to actually get some more input from the citizens, and, you know, we got another one and six-year plan coming up next year at this time. I guess the thing that I would like to see, because where we're at at this point in time, what I would like to see is at least when we get into the summer and that, that we have some inventory of what streets we have that are unpaved, community-wide. Because each person notices the street that they have to drive on that way, whereas if you're not in that area, you know, I would say there's a lot of people that are very unaware of that, that that piece, that that street is not paved. So, an inventory of what we have and locations, I think, would be very helpful come that meeting time that way and our planning, so.
I think it's a great idea. I think probably all of us could name three or four right now that we know of. There may be others that we're not aware of, and it would be very helpful going into the next stage of the prioritization process, to have an analysis of what's out there remaining and what it would cost to get it done, so. Any other comments, council, on that? Any other comments from the public on this hearing of the one and six-year street improvement Seeing none, I will move to close the hearing, close the public hearing, and move to item number 25. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, the Planning Commission report on the street plan.
The Norfolk Planning Commission reviewed the City of Norfolk 2017-2022 one and six-year street plan on February 7th, 2017, and approved the plan on an eight to zero vote.
Okay. Now we'll close the hearing and move to number 25, looking for consideration of approval of Resolution Number 2017-13, approving the 2017 to 2022 one and six-year plan for street improvements.
Your Honor, I remove consideration of Resolution Number 2017-13.
Second. Okay. Any discussion among the council? Seeing none, I'd ask for you to vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2017-13 is adopted.
Item number 26, I will open this public hearing at the request of Donald E. Melcher to consider a zoning change from I-1 Light Industrial District to C-1 Local Business District on property addressed as 205 North Seventh Street. I think we'll hear from Viall on this.
Yes, thank you. This property is right across the street from the police station, across Seventh Street. It's currently a vacant lot, and Donald Melcher would like to rezone it from I-1 to C-1, which is probably a more appropriate zoning, because a lot of interesting things can go in I-1 zoning right there, and right across the alley behind them is R-3 zoning, and there's an R-3 zoning to the south of them also. So, it would be your lightest commercial district there, and I believe there, I don't know if anybody's here to speak to that or not, but what I was told, they want to do kind of a commercial storage flex building right there now, not necessarily anything specific.
Is there anyone here, this is a public hearing, if there's anyone here wishing to comment on this, now's the time to do so. Any discussion among the council on this? Seeing none, Planning Commission report, Bill.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on February 7th, 2017, at the request of Donald E. Melcher to consider a zoning change from I-1 Light Industrial to C-1 Local Business District at 205 North Seventh. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the request on an eight to zero vote.
Okay, with that, I'll close the hearing and move to item 27, looking for consideration of ordinance number 5453 approving a zoning change from I-1 to C-1 on property addressed as 205 North Seventh Street.
Your Honor, I move consideration of ordinance number 5453.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, short title, Bill.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, blending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5453 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 5453 on second and third reading.
Second.
Okay. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5453 carries on second and third.
Okay, moving to item 28. At this time, I will open a public hearing for items number 28 and item 30, hearings at the request of SWAD LLC to consider a zone change from I-1 Light Industrial to C-3 Service Commercial on property located on South 25th Street and south of Michigan Avenue, and also zone, similar zone change from I-1 to C-3 on property located on Michigan Avenue east of 25th Street. Viall?
Your Honor, due to my employment in Newport, there's a perception of conflict of interest, and I'll be abstaining from these votes for items 28, 29, 30, and 31.
Viall, you introduce us first, please.
Yes, thank you. Number 28 is the property that came before Planning Commission in 2015, and then number 30 is the property to the east of that, that became before Planning Commission this year. Both of these, underneath the 2001 Comprehensive Plan, are commercially designated, and under the proposed Comprehensive Plan that we'll be hearing tonight, these areas are mixed commerce and that. So, everybody knows, primary uses of mixed commerce accommodates corporate office, research or health facilities, and structures that can combine office, distribution, limited industrial uses, and auto-based commercial uses. So, that category is kind of the combination, the melding between commercial and industrial, just as kind of a history of the Comprehensive Plan and the two that we're kind of using right now.
Okay, thanks, Viall. This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to comment on this, please do so now.
Good evening. I'll be brief. I'm Dick Johnson, and I'm representing SWAD on both of these zoning changes. Since we're doing them both at the same time, which I think is a good idea, I'll refer to West and East probably. The West property is the one immediately north of the Our Savior Lutheran Church property, which was before the Planning Commission well over a year ago, and by the way, approved. The East property is the property next from, between the West property all the way over to the Shopko property. Both of these have been approved by the Planning Commission. The West was approved on a six to one vote, and the East property was approved on an eight to nothing vote. We think that both properties are pretty well in conformance with both Comprehensive Mr., or the SWAD people have owned this land for well over 10 years and had little or no luck getting anybody to develop it industrially, and would like to take a shot at commercial. The property, the south line of the proposed zoning would be the north line of the Our Savior Lutheran Church property, extended straight east over to the Shopko property. That's about 575 feet from that line to the north right-of-way of Omaha Avenue, and there's probably another, Dennis can tell you, I'm sure, but 75 or 80 feet of right-of-way across Omaha Avenue to get to the Bullcraft property. Basically, what we think this would do is provide the heavy industrial, and then approximately a 650-foot area, which would ultimately be I-1 Light Industrial, which is what it is now, and what the church is, and then blend into the C-3 on the north part where SWAD is requesting these zoning changes. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Dick, do you know of any immediate interest in commercial development at either of these properties?
Not at this time, but I, it seems like there's been some commercial things pop up around town lately, and, you know, I'm sure that SWAD just wants to try to capture one or more of those.
And you said 160 feet of light industrial in between, that's essentially a buffer between the heavy industrial and commercial?
No, it'd be about 500, no, it's 575 feet from the south line of the SWAD zoning to the north line of Omaha Avenue. That would all be I-1, and then you've got 80-foot street or whatever it is, into the heavy industrial on the Bullcraft property.
Any questions for Dick?
So, Mr. Johnson, south of the east track then, are all the parcels, I don't believe all the parcels are developed right now, are they?
South of the east track?
So, see where 23rd Street runs up in there?
Oh, okay.
That parcel is not developed?
Uh, Northwest Electric is on the west side of that street.
Right.
And the east side is vacant.
And north of it is not vacant?
And north of that is all undeveloped, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yes.
So, you, if this got approved, are you gonna come back to us, then and ask to rezone that portion in there, so suddenly 160 feet becomes considerably less than 560 feet?
Well, I don't have a crystal ball, but at this point in time, I don't have any reason to think that that would happen. I don't know, I mean, you tell me how it's gonna develop.
Well, the zoning kind of drexed on its development, is what I'm getting at.
We think it's a fair buffer, and, you know, if we did want to come back, you guys would obviously have to say it and again.
Other questions for Dick? Seeing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any others wishing to comment?
Good evening, Mayor, council.
Evening.
I'm gonna give these to Viall. I'm gonna address...
Couple of your questions from our SWAD.
I'm Jim Cox, and I represent SWAD LLC, and I think I'm going to address your question. Our current, we see the bottom portion of the SWAD piece of property, which is that southeast portion that you were talking about, Mr. Langy, that, a piece of that, a large portion of that has been purchased by a light industrial company, so there's just a smaller piece in between Northwest Electric and that portion that you're talking about below Shopko. Our intention is that because that fits more of a light industrial, and who we've sold it to is more of a light industrial, that we would keep that buffer that Dick talked about from Omaha Avenue up the five hundred feet, and keep all of that light industrial down there. Second part of it is then moving north, and if you look at that second map what I did, I think what we're trying to do and what we're bearing out is that that area really is highest and best use, I guess, in zoning terms for commercial, and we've tried to follow that there's a main artery there with the West two seventy-five bypass, so you have more of your big box stores on that, and then the arterial roads, Twenty Fifth Street coming down on the east, you've got Michigan Avenue to the north. If you take a look at the map that I did, and I kind of did this myself off of Valerie's maps on the, on the internet, but the two pieces of property that SWAD is talking about for the two applications are marked hash marked there, and that's our northern pieces of the property, they're currently light industrial. I used orange to match the comp plan there, but I used orange to mark what is the current zoning that surrounds us out there, and if you look, everything to the north of us on Michigan Avenue there is commercial, it's orange. The piece of property south of Michigan and east of Twenty Fifth, on our side of Michigan Avenue, is also commercial, that triangle. Everything to the east, Office Mac, Shopko, you can see that's commercial. Down onto Omaha Avenue, if you continue east, is all commercial. It mimics the other side that you've developed out on the Menards, Hy-Vee East, Hy-Vee West, putting the commercial, smaller commercial and retail off of the main artery and onto the smaller arterial roads. I kind of like to just put my hands just on each side, and there's just that one piece of property that's a different color out there. We think that that northern piece really does lend itself more to commercial than to light industrial. As to your point, Mayor, when you asked if we had any current, anybody looking at it currently for development, we don't right now, but in the past, what we've found is that it's a roadblock. It isn't easy to try to market that piece as light industrial, and saying that we'll come before the city council, go through the process of Planning Commission coming back up, and getting y'all to vote on it. So what we're trying to do is take away that obstacle. SWAD has owned the property, as Dick said, for over ten years, and we've marketed it as light industrial out there. We'd like to take a stab at getting that northern piece that's on that arterial road as commercial, and not have to have the obstacle of coming in for a zoning change at that time, make it easier for the developer, it's already commercial. Did that answer, I can't go in, like you said, into the crystal ball, but our intention is to keep that, but because it's, there's a smaller piece out there that's just left that we own, the rest of it is sold to a light industrial, so we would prefer to keep it light industrial down there.
Thank you, Jim, any questions for Jim?
Thanks, y'all.
Thank you. Any others wishing to comment? Seeing none, back, I would ask for Planning Commission reports. Yeah, all public commentary right now, yeah, yep, please.
I apologize, Mayor, I misunderstood, I thought you were asking for proponents. I am Mark Fitzgerald, and I have the opportunity to represent Volcraft and Newcore Cold Finish and Newcore Detailing, all of which oppose the request for a zoning change, both the, I, I call them the old and the new as well, the old SWAD zoning change request and the new SWAD zoning change request. Tonight, I am with Mike Chickas. Mike is the manager of Newcore Cold Finish, and he will speak after I'm done. I want to take each one of these applications up separately, and, and talk about SWAD one or the old SWAD, the one that was written back in or applied for back in two thousand and fifteen. That is for, according to the application that is in the agenda for parking lot. That, that's what the application says, for parking lot, that is to be an ancillary use for the church. The church never needed an eight and a half acre parking lot, but that's what the application was originally for. Now, the, the church is in an industrial zone, a permitted use in industrial zone, and the application that's in front of you is for a parking lot in a, for a parking lot as an ancillary use in an industrial or in a commercial zone, which is totally unnecessary and long since become moot. I think I'm correct about that. Parking lots are permitted in every zone in the city. The requirement of off-street parking is required for every new building, every new construction in the city of Norfolk under Norfolk ordinances. So with regard to SWAD one or old SWAD, that application is moot and seeks a zoning change for something you don't really need a zoning change for, and this is not a surprise on my part. The mayor, and many of you were here, Mayor Fuickman, told SWAD, by the way, you're asking for a zoning change for off-street parking, which is not necessary, do you want to withdraw your application, and they haven't. So here it is, once again, and I'm going to ask the, the city council to finally overrule or reject, vote against that zoning change. The second application by SWAD, SWAD two, is the eleven point six acres or eleven point five nine acres. The stated reason for the zoning change in the application is to allow for development of the property as commercial. This is really most of the SWAD property that was industrially zoned when SWAD bought it, and the new comprehensive plan, and I studied for the first time in connection with this, the, the new comprehensive plan, and I want to approach my discussion with, using the new comprehensive plan, and, and we're here again, and this is probably the fifth or sixth time I've appeared before a, a city council or the Planning Commission to seek to protect the industrial zone in the Highway two seventy-five bypass area, which is identified in the new comprehensive plan as this area, and I know you all know where that is. The comprehensive plan in the narrative indicates that this is an important industrial area, and I'm looking at page one twenty-four, and I encountered some language I wasn't really sure what it meant, and I, if, if I could beg your indulgence to ask the planning and zoning official about this, it says, "Given the extent of existing industrial land use, it is appropriate that the city minimize the need to mitigate between incompatible uses through the clustering of the industrial uses." And if I could ask Val what that means, I, I think that means it's important that we protect this area.
Yes, I, I take this to mean, and talking with Olson Associates, that this sentence is meant that there is existing industrial there currently, we would encourage that industrial remain in that area, future industrial to be there, and that then minimizes what the city needs to do to mitigate between incompatible uses such as buffering, screening, zoning, that sort of thing.
So if I understand it right, your comprehensive, your new comprehensive plan recognizes this industrial area, and recognizes the need to protect this industrial area, and the way it, on it, is to create a mixed commercial zone in the vicinity of this industrial area on the SWAD land. And so everything that Mr. Johnson and Mr. Cox were talking about is really already permitted in the mixed commerce area. As I read the comprehensive plan, if, and one of the council members asked this question, i- if there was, or the mayor, if there was an actual prospect out there. If an actual prospect showed up, and they said, and they came to the Planning Commission and the city council, and they said, "We have an industrial use for the SWAD land," the, the planning official would say, "That's consistent with the comprehensive plan." And then they would have to go through the Planning Commission and the city council, or would they, would they have to go through the city, the process of the Planning Commission and the city council? Yes. And, and if, on the other hand, they said, "We have a prospect who is a commercial prospect," you would say, "That's consistent with the comprehensive plan," true? And they would have to go through the same process. So the, the people that put together your comprehensive plan recognize that this industrial area is important, that we need to develop this area carefully, but that both commercial uses and industrial uses are possible. I mean, Volcraft, Newcore would like to leave this property industrial forever, and I hope that an industrial buyer buys it all, but we have to accept, if the city council approves the comprehensive plan, and we have to accept the work of, of the people that put the comprehensive plan together, that they have determined that this is a good prospect for mixed commercial use, and that the description of what is a mixed commerce, I want to use the term correctly, is satisfactory protection, and the, the industrial area is protected by the prospect having to come before the Planning Commission, and coming before the city council before the land can be used in that way. So we're asking that with regard to SWAD two, which is a, an effort, I think, to maybe come, or to proceed quick enough to beat the new comprehensive plan, and try to squeeze all this land in as commercial before the comprehensive plan hits, that the city council recognize that and reject that application as well. The buffer that the Mr. Cox and Mr. Johnson described is not adequate. It is essentially those first lots along Omaha, and it's not adequate to protect the heart of the industrial area within the city of Norfolk. So we're asking that the city council finally reject SWAD's second application or the SWAD two application. Any questions? Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Mike Chickas, I am the operations manager at Newcore Cold Finish here in Norfolk, and I'm here in opposition, opposition of the zoning change application by SWAD, requesting a zoning change for property along Michigan east of Twenty Fifth Street from I one to C three. I'd like to read from the final draft of the two thousand and seventeen comprehensive plan that's been referred to tonight. The plan reads, "The aspirations of the community are reflected in the statement, 'One Norfolk Moving Forward.' As one community moving forward, Norfolk is a vibrant community offering shovel-ready industrial sites, a network of transportation quarters, abundant low-cost utilities, diverse education opportunities, and a quality workforce. I do not believe that it is good for this community to eliminate property that is already suitable for industry and make it unsuitable for industry. This area is prime shovel-ready industrial property. As Mark had mentioned in his comments, the two thousand and seventeen comprehensive plan future land use identifies this tract of land as mixed commerce. This mixed commerce designation is intended to provide a development pattern that will allow greater flexibility to the city in effort to develop different types of industrial, commercial, and office services land uses, which C, C three does not offer that flexibility. My concern, concern with the zoning change request is the impact on the current industries in this area, and the impact on future industrial growth in this area. Industry in the city of Norfolk have a vested interest in protecting this industrial area of the city." Thanks, any questions?
Mike, just so I'm clear, you, you guys are okay and comfortable with a mixed commerce designation for that area?
We
But not, but not a commercial zone?
We, we agree with the two thousand and seventeen comprehensive plan designation for that area as mixed commerce.
Okay.
Yes.
And maybe Val, you can talk about some of the distinctions between I one and C three zoning, what, what some of those distinctions are, so we have an idea. I know that might not be an easy question, but.
C three zoning is really your heaviest commercial district, that's where you're going to find your Walmarts, Menards, Lowes, along with other commercial uses, but that C three is supposed to be that heaviest commercial. I one is your light industrial, and if you look at our land use matrix, there are quite a few that uses that can be in both C three and I one, but that light industrial is really to take that next step out of the commercial zoning for industrial uses that you wouldn't necessarily be able to, to put in the C three, if that helps at all.
And a lot of times, for planning purposes, I one is used as a, a transition area between heavy industrial and commercial.
Right, that I one is that light industrial between the heavy commercial and the heavy industrial, yeah.
Dick, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
You knew I'd be back. First of all,
First of all, the original zoning application that was done a year ago that talked about a parking lot, after that meeting to which Mark referred, I sent a letter to the mayor, I believe I sent it through Val, but I don't know if you guys have seen that or not. And frankly, he caught me off guard. I'd forgotten about it. At the time, when we were filling out zoning applications, we, we tried to inform the city of, of what we were trying to do. Now, there wasn't going to be an eight and a half acre parking lot, but at the time, our Savior Lutheran was talking about buying some land from SWAD to have additional parking for their proposed church facility. If you'll notice on the second application, I became way more vague. And that was in response, and on zoning applications that I've filled out since, for the most part, I haven't tried to tie it down just in response to that particular meeting. Anyway, you can, if you need that letter, I can find it for you someday. The comprehensive plan, Val, I keep forgetting, what's the new comprehensive plan called for, for this area?
Mixed Commerce.
Mixed Commerce. Okay. Thank you. And that, as I understand it, is basically a combination of heavy commercial, light industrial-
It's supposed to be the whole area in between?
Yeah. Right. Okay. I want to remind you guys that mixed commerce is not, and to my understanding, will not be, a zoning district in the city of Norfolk. C-3 is a zoning district, I-1 is a zoning district. Mixed commerce is a future land use on the map based on what Olsons and the city and the planning commission and you folks think the land should develop as a use. But to say that this mixed commerce basically lets us do the C-3 is not correct at all. We still have to get the zoning change if we want to get C-3 and have commercial uses. The other two comments, number one, at one time I counted when we were working on the church property, and I believe there's, at the time, there was approximately 275 uses that were allowed under the matrix in either C-3 or I-1. So they're, they're pretty compatible zoning designation. And, you know, we don't think we're asking for anything that's out of line with the comprehensive plan, either one of them for that matter. Last but not least, this council not too long ago, and I agree with it, saw fit to change ordinance, or city code 27-8. Prior to that being changed, when we wanted a zoning change, if it didn't match the comprehensive plan, we had to change the comprehensive plan first. Now, the city code, and Clint can correct me if I'm wrong, basically says that we have to look at it and see how it affects the comprehensive plan. It, it kind of makes the comprehensive plan more of a guideline than anything set in stone.
I agree.
Did I get some of that right?
I agree.
All right. Then I'm gonna sit down now.
Just, just like Pirates of the Caribbean, it's guideline.
I'm gonna sit down before I screw it up, unless you have questions.
Oh. I do have a question about the parking lot. So, Dick, are you basically saying that the application for the parking lot by the church at this point in time is irrelevant to the zoning change request before us?
I, yeah, I think so. Basically, what I'm saying is that's only one of several hundred uses that could go in C-3, and that was the one that we had in mind at the time. It may or may not be relevant anymore. I, I think they're looking at something a little different.
I guess the only question I have for you, Dick, is if the two are so comparable, why do we need to have a change? There's so many uses that are the same.
Retail. C-3 will offer retail, I-1 doesn't.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
It, it does prompt another question from me and Valerie, this is probably directed at you again, but to Dick's point that mixed commerce is a future land use designation in the comp plan and not a zoning category, how, how would we, or how would we foresee fitting our current zoning categories with a mixed, mixed commerce land use designation?
Mixed commerce is a comp plan designation, not a zoning category. That is true. The mixed commerce can have I-1 zoning in there, VP zoning, C-3 zoning, so that's where you can have that mix of zoning in that mixed commerce. So you could have multiple zoning categories out there if, if you wanted to. So if something did not fit in C-3 zoning, but it did fit in I-1, you could have both zoning categories out there next to each other.
We are still in the midst of a public hearing. Is there anyone else wishing to comment at this point? If not, I'll close, I'll, I'll ask back for planning commission reports.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on Tuesday, November 3, 2015, at the request of SWAD LLC to consider a zone change from I-1 light industrial to C-3 service commercial, on the property located at South 25th Street and south of Michigan Avenue. The planning commission recommends approval of the request on a six to one vote. Let me get to the other one. And the Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on Tuesday, February 7, 2017, at the request of SWAD LLC to consider a zone change from I-1 light industrial to C-3 service commercial on the property located on Michigan Avenue east of 25th Street. The planning commission recommended approval of the request on an eight to zero vote.
Okay. Hearing both planning commission reports, I will close.
Your honor, I've got a question for Val before you close.
Well, so as, as we're sitting here with, with the comprehensive plan and the current zonings as they sit right now with, with the industrial in there, there's nothing saying that, that it can't be marketed as C. All it means is that if they wanted to market it as a retail situation, they would need at some point in time to come and ask for a zoning change, not necessarily, not a comprehensive plan change. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? We will close both public hearings and move to item number 29, looking for consideration of ordinance number 5432 approving the zone change from I-1 light industrial to C-3 service commercial on property located on South 25th Street and south of Michigan Avenue.
Your honor, I would offer consideration ordinance number 5432.
Second?
Further discussion on this?
Your honor, from, from the public hearing, what I gathered on it and, and, and what kind of concerns me about it is that the, the developers out there basically fishing to see what he can sell the property at. The history of it, which, which was a little bit, didn't go all the way back on it, go back a few years prior to this, we, we found that it was trying to be zone residential, C-3 also. So, so that's my concern about this and, and adopting this change. And, and as per my question to Valerie was, it, it doesn't, the, the current zoning doesn't prevent the, the owners or the developers from marketing it as, as potential retail. It just means that they come back before us. My, my, my greatest concern is that, one, the retail won't take off, and then the next step would be, well, we've, we've got retail there, why, why can't we go back to, or why can't we go to residential? And that the history that's developed on this piece of property, just in, in the zoning changes that have come forward in the last decade, reflect that, that, that it's more of a fishing adventure than it is, okay, here's where it is, let's market it, let's find somebody, and, and then let's come back with the realistic zoning change on it. So I, I have a tough time supporting this just for, for the mere fact that, well, we think we might have a better opportunity of, of selling the property.
Any other discussion? I, yeah, I, I think this is, it's a delicate one. I certainly understand the desire among our industry partners to maintain corridor that allows transition between heavy industry and commercial. You also look at the map and you see an awful lot of commercial surrounding this area. So it's truly one of those gray areas in my mind, and as Jim noted too, has been marketed as an industrial area for some time without a lot of success. So that, that factors into this too, but it's, it's one that I think a decision's going to be, going to have to be made at, at some point as to once and for all, what, what do we classify this as? So I'd invite any other discussion or comments, and if not, the decision is before us now. Short title.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when the ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
And just, again, for clarification's sake, this is just one parcel here that we've talked about, the publication, it's the West parcel. Okay. No further discussion, please vote.
Voting in favor of the ordinance, Councilmember Claussen. Voting against the ordinance, Councilmembers Langy, Merrill, Muren, Jackson, Faust, File, abstaining. Councilman Granquist, motion fails.
Moving to item number 31, consideration of ordinance number 54, 54 approving, approving a zoning change from I-1 to C-3 on property located at Michigan Avenue east of 25th Street.
Your honor, I'd introduce ordinance 5454 on first reading. Second.
Any further discussion?
A little discussion on this, I guess, since I'm a little lone duck up here. I guess you've got to look at this as a situation where, yes, we say this is for mixed use, but like you stated, at a certain time, we need to draw the line, what we're gonna draw the line and where it's gonna be. There is a buffer there with I-1, and if somebody came back later and asked for this to be C-3, there'd be the same opposition, there'd be the same voice, there'd be the same meeting we'd be having right now. And so that would be a situation when there would be an opportunity for somebody that wants to buy that property and they're changing, wanting to change it to C-3, and it's not gonna sell, it's gonna stay I-1, and then for 10 more years, we may never see any development there. We've got a 580-foot buffer there, essentially, with an 80-foot street to the east of there, we've got an 80-foot street with C-3 sitting. So I can't honestly justify why, with a 580-foot buffer and go on C-3, which then goes right up to C-3. I do agree with Jim about the, you know, now that we've changed, that we are making a statement that this is either, I guess it's mixed use, somebody could probably come back and see if it could be R-3 again. I think it, with it being a solid zoning change to C-3, we've made a statement that that's it. We're stick, this is where it's gonna stay at C-3. Obviously, when those, when that came to, came to, upon us to vote for that, to change to R-3, if you recall, that vote, there was one vote in favor and that was it. So I mean, the history of this property states that it's either gonna stay commercial, and with the vote we just made, I'd have a hard time seeing that ever changed to commercial. But it definitely is gonna stay I-1. So I guess if I'm the property owner on that development, I would probably be sitting in the same shoes, wanting to make that change now, so that I know if I did have the, they do, I do have the property sold in, as, in this case, as C-3, I don't have to come before you and try to sell it again, because more than likely, it's not gonna change. We just made that very well known. So that's how I feel about that chunk of property, and that's why my vote was what it was. I believe we're providing a buffer for industry there. It's better than the buffer we provided east of there by 600 feet, so.
When I, excuse me, I feel a little more comfortable about this, but again, I still have some of the same objections to it and, and the notation that, that, your last comment that, that we, it's more buffer than what we provided directly east of it, that's true, mainly because that was just an existing parcel that sat there, and that's how it was zoned in. And this body historically, from the 80s on up through now, if there is property sitting there that's being used commercially, it's always been somewhat the, the connotation that we don't want to change that zoning while those folks are sitting on top of it. And I says, that's why I, you know, yeah, there, there's some property to the east that puts directly to Omaha Avenue, that's, that's commercial. Whether that's, that's appropriate or not is, is a matter for a different discussion. So again, with this area, and, you know, I, I've, I've heard this through the years is that, you know, this, this isn't gonna sell, this hasn't sold well. I think we also need to look at what the climate has been like for the, for the last decade as far as industrial growth and industrial movements, and I, I strongly believe that that, that's changing now, and, and we have an area or, or a corridor in there that, that's attuned to industrial, and I, unless I have a, a firm prospect that, that wants to, that really wants to do something there, I just have a tough time changing this, so.
Dick, we're closed from the public comment part of this, so we're gonna continue on with discussion. I think, you know, I see validity in, in things that were said by both councilmen Claussen and Langy. Just looking at the map, again, I think any future discussion of residential is, is a non-starter in, in this area, just simply looking at the map and projected future growth and land use in, in this area town. I think if, you know, as, as the vote indicated tonight, this council's chosen a direction, I will not be surprised, though, given the current environment of things, if we would see a, um, either request for this being commercial or some, some kind of mixed commerce fit in the future. It's encroached, encroached upon on all sides by commercial, and the writing does seem to be on the wall. With that, unless there's any other discussion, please vote. Short title, sorry.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. Excuse me.
And with that, please vote.
Voting in favor of the ordinance, Councilman Claussen. Opposing the ordinance, councilmembers Langy, Merrill, Muren, Jackson, Faust, File, abstaining. Councilman- Councilman Granquist, motion fails.
All right, moving on to the regular agenda. Item thirty-two, consideration of approval for award of contract directions, construction of Tilden, Nebraska for alternative number one, B S V C P pipe of the Southwest Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Phase Two project for an amount of one million, three-hundred-and-sixty-one-hundred-thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars, seventy-five cents, which was the lowest bid for all alternatives. And I think we hear from, I'd ask for a motion. We have a motion.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Okay. Shane.
Sorry, Your Honor. This is born out of public works departments, Bailey Wick, in response to Mayor and Council's desire to move economic development forward and be aggressive in our placing in infrastructure to support economic development throughout our community. This particular project is, as described, will run the sewer from the area of Monroe Avenue and south down in there by Todd's Park, and run it west towards Twenty-Fifth Street to the corner of Twenty-Fifth and Omaha. Eliminate a lift station there, which is great as well, but what it really does is opens the door for further development going up to the north on Twenty-Fifth Street and in that general area for industrial and commercial development. So this is a nice direction that the Mayor and Council, again, took in their budgeting last year, and this is the fruit of that. Dennis, or I'd be happy to answer any questions. If you have particulars, Dennis would be happy to answer these questions.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Not so much question, Dennis. This is the, the clay pipe is what we installed in the other project earlier, I believe.
It is the same that we did. Phase one was fortified clay pipe, and we did fortified clay pipe on the northeast industrial sewer, phase one, too. I think it's probably the best pipe material out there for long-term, multi-year, hundred years life. Berdified clay has gotten a bad rap over the years. I think that the latest rap is, is we destroyed it, we put it in, we've got better testing methods than we do now. They've also got a joint that, the other issue they had over the years was joints, but they've got a joint now that will hold up to plastic joints. It's a very, it's an inert material, is basically why it's great for sewers. It doesn't deteriorate.
Any other questions? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
All right. Item thirty-three, consideration of ordinance number fifty-four, forty-eight, approving adoption of the two thousand seventeen comprehensive plan for the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, in that area in which the city is exercising its extraterritorial jurisdiction, and repeal of the two thousand one City of Norfolk comprehensive plan along with its two thousand six transportation, and two thousand fifteen energy element updates by adopting and amending section nineteen dash five of Norfolk City Code. Ordinance number fifty-four, forty-eight passed on first reading at the February sixth City Council meeting. Val, would you like to introduce this for us, please?
You're all right. Move consideration of ordinance number fifty-four, forty-eight on second reading.
Second.
All right, now.
At the first reading, it was mentioned that this is a large document and takes some time to look it over. I did not receive any comments about what is in there, except for the graphics of the plan. Some people were a little confused as to the graphics when they got into the specific planning districts, and just were looking at some legibility of graphics, but no text changes or anything else came to mind and got turned into me, so nothing has changed between first reading and now.
Any questions, comments on approval of comprehensive plan? I think it was stated last time, but I'll state it again. I think there was a lot of good work that went into this process, provides, what'd you say, guide, roadmap? All right, guideline for future growth of the community. Lots of public input went into creation of the plan and its various components, and from it, we hope to be able to utilize some of the suggestions in terms of potentially modernizing some of our zoning and taking a look at annexation policies, for example. So no further discussion. Bath, short title.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section nineteen dash five of the official city code to adopt the City of Norfolk Comprehensive Plan Update two thousand seventeen, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay. The guy, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance forty, fifty-four, forty-eight carries on second reading.
Your Honor, I would move since the third reading on this ordinance number fifty-four, forty-eight is just a voting situation and no comment, that we suspend the rules and pass this on third reading.
Second.
All right. If no discussion on that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance fifty-four, forty-eight carries on third reading.
Okay, moving on to item thirty-four, consideration of ordinance number fifty-four, fifty-five to amend sections thirteen dash one twelve, thirteen dash one thirteen, one fifteen, and one sixteen of the city code to revise provisions related to itinerant merchants, peddlers, solicitors, street vendors, and temporary merchants.
I'll offer consideration, ordinance number fifty-four, fifty-five.
Second.
Okay. Beth, or Clint, want to introduce this?
I can address it if my boys hold valid. A lot of this ordinance is just cleaning up parts of the ordinance. The section thirteen one twelve deletes language about a non-refundable application and permit fee, because it's only a permit fee that's required. Section thirteen one twelve C is a new section that allows a temporary merchant or a street vendor to use up to two locations per permit. This has been the standard for quite some time, it just hasn't been in the city code. Section thirteen one thirteen B and C simplifies language regarding peddlers or solicitors permits as set forth in the city code. And then thirteen one fifteen adds a, is added to require all itinerant merchants, peddlers, or solicitors to carry the permit on their person while engaging in the activities, so that they can prove that they have gotten a permit when asked. And section thirteen one sixteen addresses zoning setback and sign requirements. And if you have any specific questions about that, I guess Val would be able to answer that.
Any questions or comments from the council?
I will add, a subcommittee met last week, a subcommittee of the City Council, and reviewed this and approved, moving forward with it.
Okay. Any discussion on this, council? If not, short title.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend sections thirteen one twelve, thirteen one thirteen, thirteen one fifteen, and thirteen one sixteen of the official city code to revise provisions related to itinerant merchants, peddlers, solicitors, street vendors, and temporary merchants, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, with that, please vote.
All council members present, voting in the affirmative. Ordinance fifty-four, fifty-five carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance fifty-four, fifty-five on second and third.
Second, Your Honor.
No discussion on that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance fifty-four, fifty-five carries on second and third.
Moving to item thirty-five, consideration of ordinance number fifty-four, fifty-six, amending section two dash five of the code to change permit fees for itinerant merchants, peddlers, solicitors, street vendors, and temporary merchants, to remove a library late fee, and to update admission fees for AquaVenture Water Park.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance number fifty-four, fifty-six.
Second.
Okay. And Clint, I think we heard on this.
Basically, the changes that are in there are what Bath read in the short title, as it relates to the peddler and the solicitors and the temporary merchants, but they're one of the things, one of the reasons there's so many of them in there is that there are opportunities for permits of various times, ninety days, eighty days, thirty days a year. So that's why there are so many there, so we can answer any of those particular permits. I think there's one in there that talks about some issues related to the, related to the AquaVenture, to the water park submittals, which I think there's someone here that can answer those questions. And my favorite change, you just got to hear from Jessica, why the change for the, for the library, it's because there's a, we're cleaning up a late fee for VCR tapes that you are no longer having in your collection. So we need to get rid of that. If you can answer any questions that you might have.
I have a VCR player.
Did you say VCR or eight-track?
VCR. Also have an eight-track, but I don't use it.
Is Jessica looking for any of your content?
I have a question. It says change fees for merchants, peddlers, solicitors. What are we, are we changing fees? I didn't hear you state that part, I just saw there was.
That's me. Yes, we, we.
I guess what's the change in the fees?
The change is we're offering more variety, we're suggesting more variety, they can get a thirty-day permit, a ninety-day permit, one eighty-day or an annual permit at varying fees.
Gotcha, I was under. And as we had a fee set, we were adjusting the fees.
No, we just gave them more options.
And this would mostly apply to food truck vendors? Bath, is that true?
It applies to anybody, a peddler, any of the, any of that comes in for a vendor permit. And I will add that I looked up who had all received vendor permits over the last two years, and I sent them all this information, and I've gotten some positive comments, but no negative, nobody has called me or anything about it, so they kind of like the idea of different options.
So the input was positive from?
Yes, mhm, what I've found so far.
Okay, yeah. I did see that we changed, or we clarified that the food trucks, if you will, cannot be located in residential property. Is that true, Clint?
Yeah, that's not really part of the, of this ordinance, that's the.
The last one.
Yeah, and when you, when you look at those, the things that were really addressed there, which were kind of problematic or really of concern, that we as staff have heard, are the ones, I think they're in thirteen one one six of that ordinance, which talks about some of the requirements that are significant, or as you say, you got to be in a commercial or industrial area if you're engaged in those, and you have to be on hard-surfaced properties in regard to that. And we also addressed in that prior ordinance, the, some setbacks, so that you either comply with the lesser of, the setback that's applicable to the property where you're at, which is what the code says now, or it really lessens the setback that's provided for in the code, but probably not in practice, where you can be as far back as the building on the lot next, next to where you're located, or closest to where you're located. So those, I think, are the primary things that were in that ordinance, and the fee schedule. If you got the fee, Bath, you can correct me, but if you got the fee for a year, has the fee changed? Is it going up as a result of this, or is it staying the same?
No, it has gone up, mhm.
And so if I, if I elect the one-year option, what is the, to answer, to answer Councilman Clausen's question, what is the change?
That one from the annual would go up to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year.
And what was it?
It was seventy-five before.
So a significant change. Oh, yes, from that standpoint, but Bath, you also did the research from our comparable.
Right, and I was going to say, I surveyed, compared Fremont, Columbus, Grand Island, all those, and the average, if you took all of those, plus Vermillion, South Dakota, the average for an annual permit was six-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars. And so if you take Vermillion out, it's right around two-hundred-and-thirty or forty dollars, so we're right in the ballpark with what the annual fee is with surrounding communities.
Was the feedback still positive?
I haven't heard anything on that. They like the options to have, uh-huh.
So the annual permit in comparison to costs in our sister cities is in the low to mid, is comparatively lower?
For the seventy, the previous seventy-five dollars was considerably lower, yes, but right now, it will be in the ballpark.
It'll be.
Mhm, comparable.
Clint, would we have a buffer zone for a food truck then?
I think it depends on what it's serving.
If it's up against C-3 or R-3, is that worth?
I don't think that we have buffer zones in regard to, I don't know. The only, the only thing that would rely or have anything to do actually with, that would relate on where its placement is, is the setback of whatever the existing setback is, or the closest building to it, so that we're not hiding it in behind something or whatever.
So ask Bath if we could just go through the fees for the non-annual periods.
Okay. A thirty-day fee would be twenty-five dollars, and these days have to be consecutive, of course, it's not thirty days throughout the year, it would be one month. A ninety-day is sixty dollars, a hundred-and-eighty day is a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars.
And are those options consistent with what our, what other cities are offering too?
Mhm, mhm.
So we did seek to, and this gives some consistency to our fee, our policies in this way, in terms of what other surrounding communities are trying to do, and appreciate the staff work into this, and seeking the input of vendors as well in the process.
One of the, one of the things, Mayor, if I may, if you look at this, you look at all of this yellow that's on this page, what is it, three, three twenty-two or so, you see all these various options that are showing up on there. So we, we made all of these changes to give those various options, where it used to be that there really weren't any options, it was an option for an annual permit and nothing else, and so we're taking out four and we're putting in a whole page of options, just to make the ordinance longer, I think. So, you know, that's, that's one of the effects that's there, because some folks are, I mean, as we all know, especially as it relates to food trucks, some of them are fairly permanent, and, and yet there are other activities that come to mind, and when you talk about the temporary merchants, I think that, you know, the ones that sell the Elvis rugs or the plain poker dog rugs, or then we get everything from that to the food trucks, to the, to the situation where you've got a paintless dent repair that comes to town after there's a hailstorm. I think all of those can, all fall within that, and those are, so, you know, they're not always going to be mobile, they might be in a tent, they might, they, but they might certainly be mobile or in a, in a vehicle as well.
So can my kids still set up a lemonade stand in residential area?
I think so.
Because it adds to the news in some cities where they do come in and shut them down.
I think that goes under the part of discretion.
Okay, all right. I think offering options for different periods of time, because you do see some, some food trucks, for example, that seem to be permanent, others that just operate maybe for three or four months, specifically the summer, having the option for those vendors to not have to pay for an annual permit if they're not going to use it that way, I think, is being customer-friendly, so. Any other discussion? use it that way, I think, um, is being customer friendly, so, um, any other discussion, comments, council on that? If not, do we do short title, this one? Okay, uh, please vote.
You don't want me to read the short title?
Oh, I thought we did.
Oh, you said, did we?
Yeah, no.
No, I said, I said, do we?
I couldn't remember if we did that.
I'm sorry, no, we do. An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section two dash five of the official city code to change permit fees for itinerant merchants, peddlers, solicitors, street vendors, and temporary merchants, to remove a library late fee, to update admission fees for AquaVenture Water Park, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay.
Sorry, Josh.
Yep.
Um, the admission fees for the water park, that's, we didn't discuss that, I don't, is there, are those going up, or Eli, I guess, can come help us with that?
Um, actually, there, like, the real changes in, um, in this will be, we, we change a family pass to a group pass, where, and that goes up by ten dollars, and one of the reasons we're doing this is just accommodates all the different, different needs of families during their summer recreation, some folks have, um, a childcare person who lives with them during the summer, or comes in, and then they can go on the, on the group pass, so that changed, and the only other thing is, is we've lumped, um, all our age categories together, other cities do that, because then we, we just have one, one lump sum for the individual pass, and then, um, the group rate is going up by three dollars, went from thirty-two to thirty-five, so that's pretty much the, the changes for this next year, uh, we haven't had a change since we opened in two thousand twelve.
How would we compare to other communities as far as our rates?
Our rates are, the group, the group rate, we are, um, a hundred dollars less than the proposed rate, will be a hundred dollars less than, um, Columbus, forty dollars less than Fremont, and ten dollars, uh, above Grand Island.
Thanks, Sheila. Okay, any questions, comments? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-four fifty-six carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance fifty-four fifty-six on second and third.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, no discussion on that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-four fifty-six carries on second and third.
Okay, item thirty-six, notification from the U.S. Department of Justice regarding the investigation, city of Norfolk pursuant to the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act of two thousand, that the circumstances of this matter do not currently require enforcement by the U.S. Department of Justice, and they're closing the investigation, uh, this is an update, um, on, uh, this case, um, and I think in, uh, attempts to be open and transparent, we wanted to, uh, report the letter, the findings of the letter that the city received from a Department of Justice official, uh, within the last week, and I will, uh, just read into the record the pertinent parts of that letter. In our investigation, we examined whether city zoning law and land use matrix treated religious assemblies or institutions on less than equal terms with nonreligious assemblies or institutions in the city's I-one zoning district, we thank you for providing the documents necessary to carry out this investigation in an efficient manner. The, the department has determined that the circumstances of this matter do not currently require enforcement by this office, the closing of this investigation should not be construed as a determination of whether the city did or did not violate our LUPA and does not foreclose any fut- future action by the department regarding the city's zoning and land use practices based on new facts that may come to the department's attention. So that puts a period on a long, um, discussion in our community throughout the last year that I think ended in a reasonable resolution that allows the community to move forward, and I would, um, entertain any comments or questions in this regard from council, if there are none, we are closed for the evening, item thirty-seven, uh, the quarterly economic development update will be moved to the next city council meeting. Thanks, everybody, good evening.